I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda as presented. Does anyone have any changes, questions, issues, or additions to the existing agenda? If none, I got a motion by Rick Stoller to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing, Jim?
Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight, I would like, this is my desire, to have an officer take an oath administered by the mayor. Tonight, we have Officer Katie Spicer here. She was appointed on June 18th and has successfully completed her field training. Ms. Spicer was raised in Fairbowl, Minnesota. She graduated from Fairbowl High School and received an Associate of Science degree in law enforcement from Normandale Community College and a law enforcement certificate from Minneapolis Community and Technical College. Spicer's law enforcement career includes serving on the Moorestown Police Department as of April 2006 to September 2007, after which she was hired by the Fairbowl Police Department and had served with Fairbowl prior to her appointment here till September of 2007. While on the Fairbowl Police Department, she served in patrol, as an investigator, a school resource officer, and was an agent on the Cannon River Valley Drug and Violent Offender Task Force for four years. Katie has over 13 years' law enforcement experience, so she was a great addition to the city of New Prague in our police department. And in the time she has been here, she has been well-received by the department and by the community with a lot of positive feedback about her employment with us now. So with that, I would like to ask the mayor to come down and administer the oath to her. Before we do that, we could introduce her father and mother are here, Ross, her husband, and then two of her children, two of her three girls are here, Sophie and then Frankie.
Yep, that's right.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Katie Spicer.
I, Katie Spicer.
On my honor.
On my honor.
Will never betray my badge.
Will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character or the public trust.
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota and its laws.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota and its laws.
I will uphold the ordinances of the city of New Prague.
I will uphold the ordinances of the city of New Prague.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And community to the best of my abilities.
And community to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Katie.
Thank you very much.
Patrick, you need a picture of it?
Sure.
Patrick, why don't you have a do a picture with your family?
Alright. Why not?
Thanks, Council. Congratulations.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you very much.
Don't tell her you won't offend anyone.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay, next thing on the agenda.
So, a she's permanent request from QuickTrip Inc. They are applying for a 7,800 square foot V2 store, 3,000 square foot attached car wash with associated fuel and diesel fueling canopies. Property is owned V2 community commercial. This is a conditional use which is permitted by public conditions in the V2 district. The planning commission held a public hearing on November 20th. We had comments received from Chantel, the owner of Members of Malmesum's Academy, Tracy Urada, one of our employees, Robert Yoskam, the property owner, Jason, director of the East outside city limits, Dean George, QuickTrip, and then Brent Foss of E&amp;D Center, the letter. We had comments received concerning the EAW petition, the possibility of the daycare having to close due to environmental concerns, traffic concerns, ensuring health and safety of children, daycare was not protected, noise from car wash, and vehicles generally into and out of the site, mosquitoes and critters in storm pond areas, and then finally, we had support noted from the property owner, Mr. Yoskam, directly to the east of the property. The planning commission did ultimately recommend approval, four to zero. They had a condition they added at the meeting related to the EAW petition, which the council took action on earlier December. Overnight parking in island was also prohibited, and that was added as a condition of the CP. And then, we looked at if stormwater ponds could be moved away from adjacent to the daycare and due to topography and other things, they're not going to move. But the ponds are actually filtration basins, should call them ponds, so they actually, after a day of sitting, they won't have water in them. So, the concern of children running in and drowning is only great immediately after storm events. QuickTrip has been proposed to put a fence around pond adjacent to the daycare. I do want to note that. Staff met with Chantel last Wednesday, talked about the concerns she had at the public hearing, and then additional concerns that she had raised in an email set again to the council. Additional concerns were added related to requiring a stage one vapor recovery system. It's not normally required in Scott County in the city of New Prague. The metro area is required, but New Prague, as you know, we're exempted from the council rules. So, that is a condition we want to add and make sure that they have that vapor recovery system. And then also a general condition to comply with state and federal law. So getting back to the environmental end of things, so a citizen petition was completed, meaning it was denied by the council on September 2nd. They had, I think, about 115 signatures on the petition, obviously noting a number of concerns on that petition that I put together a summary in the packet. I won't go through all those concerns concerning traffic, noise, air quality, and groundwater quality as well, and how we've addressed those through various conditions in the report, and then also from other state agencies that have rules in place for them currently, where we would not look to add any additional on top of that. So I do want to note that the summary document doesn't indicate any reason to delay approval of the conditions permit. I do note that the 60-day rule would run its course on January 12th. So we don't necessarily have to take action tonight. So I do want to note that, but at this point, I don't see any reason to delay final action. So ultimately, staff and the planning commission do recommend approval of the conditions permit for both QuickTrip. I used to have a couple of photos to run through here. On the overhead of the property, about six and a half acres overall, you can see Members of Malmesum's Academy located directly to the northwest of the site there. NAPA and Harold Brothers Construction and then another commercial buildings and apartments above there. Everything in the immediate vicinity is owned V2 community commercial. That's in red on the map there. First Street Northeast is a minor collector road, so I could take higher volumes of traffic as kind of a backage road to the highway. Here's a site planning for QuickTrip. They have three accesses, one on Chalupski Avenue, one on First Street lining up with the daycare's access to the north, and another one on a new public road, George Avenue. And that will take the bulk of the trucks that we're traveling through for diesel fueling, which is kind of on southeast corner of the site. The gas canopy is on the south end of the site. Couple of things to note. One of the conditions we added as well during our meeting with Chantel was to have the venting, intake venting, come out the canopy so it's as far away from the daycare site as possible on the property. Do you want to note that the pond on the property is a nurbs pond that's basically lined with clay? It has safeguards in place so that contaminants do not leave that. None of this water gets into these filtration basins by the daycare or anywhere else in the site. There are kind of these snout things that collect any contaminants within catch basins on the site. These are all MPCA requirements that they are meeting and are required to meet. Huge amount of circulation for making sure that they could get larger vehicles sometimes into and out of the site, deliveries and that type of thing. Just kind of layout there. This just shows how George Avenue provides baggage. We'll go over this more in the plan review to Katie with Mr. Yoskam's property and then the other property here, due to their inability to get access off Alton Avenue north. Per an agreement we have with Scott County that limits access. And that's kind of why First Street Northeast goes directly to the north and then over to Alton Avenue.
Excuse me, Katie, where is the location of the car wash?
Oh, excuse me. Let me back up here. Car wash is located in the very north edge of the site here. So basically, cars will enter and then exit and be able to leave the site through this access, or they could continue out any of the other ones, or most likely they would leave here. It's roughly about 200 feet from the edge of the car wash to the front of the daycare. One thing I do want to note, QuickTrip did apply for a variance just last Wednesday for a variance from our car wash requirement that the door has to be closed during the car wash and dry cycle. They granted a variance in the other site through town. They did not apply until last Wednesday, so we do not have the variance on the table tonight. As of what's standing for your review tonight, you'd be approving with the condition having to be met, that that door has to be closed. So, subject to any further review, that would go to the planning commission at their meeting in January, and then it'll come toward the council in February. So, that variance is not on the table. That would be up to you guys at that point to determine if that variance is valid, to keep that door open. Obviously, there could be noise concerns of that. I have not gone to the staff report review of that. So, I just want to note that that is not a topic for tonight's consideration. Couple other maps. QuickTrip meets our V2 design requirements as brick, varying roofline patterns, and very, very simple building out of town already on the west side. Fuel canopy elevation and diesel fuel canopy elevation. And just a couple of photos, you can see the daycare in proximity to the site. Majority of the building in the site, the pond will actually be located kind of in this area here that you're seeing directly across you from the daycare. QuickTrip and everything else will, hopefully, it'll be over near where the wooded area is to give you kind of a perspective on how big the property actually is. Just another view here for you. And then, finally, just kind of an overview of the area in general. So, First Street has to extend over to a known point per agreement with the county located about 1,000 feet north of it. It's a little unusual and I'll have to add a route here there. That's what we have going on. I do want to note there were some letters received and are included in the packet from a couple of different residents, and then Chantel as well submitted a couple today that were printed. I know you're receiving the email. We've printed them again, provide them in front of you for your review here tonight. And again, I do want to note, public hearings not required. So we'll take a couple of comments. And I think that's all we have from the staff report at this point.
From the fueling area to the front of the daycare is how many feet rough?
About 400 feet from any fueling area, whether it be diesel or gas, only to the front of the daycare. And obviously, that is just an approximation based on the canopy.
Okay, anyone have any other questions?
I know that one of the conditions is to abide by all, comply with all state and federal regulations. How often are gas stations monitored or visited to ensure that those environmental regulations that are in place are actually being complied?
You have a particular area of concern about that, like whether it be the tanks that are underground or ponding or?
It would be, obviously, the tanks. And I know that the construction of the tanks is aligned, I mean, with signal in between the two. It's more of, I know, the car wash, and there's a catch basin under the car wash that then has to, I don't know, if that water is filtered in some way to take out some of the?
That actually all goes to the sanitary sewer from the car wash, so none of that goes back into the ponds or anything like that.
Okay, great. All right. The tanks themselves, I'm probably dating myself, but is there a ways of measures that comes out to ensure that what's being dispensed is accurate and, you know, any concern of overflow? I just, I don't know a lot about?
Yeah, ways of measures, thinking, I don't want to speak for QuickTrip, but I don't know, I know Emily, your counterpart, is not here yet. She's probably already experimented.
Is it, is it an annual basis that there's a site visit? I'm just, I really don't know anything about it, so I'm sorry if I'm kind of catching you off, you know, kind of.
Yeah, I would actually defer some of those questions.
Yeah.
How often are the MPCA visits for fuel tank, review, vapor recovery system, that type of thing?
I believe it's yearly.
Okay.
Yep. And then, so there are monitoring alarms and everything that are hooked up to the tank, so if something's off, they will go off. And then our trucks hooked up to them, they can also tell if something's off.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just, I don't know a lot about that, so I was just kind of curious.
If the state ways of measures, I know there's always on gas stations, that must be an annual thing with that.
I know that there are always ways to know if something is going wrong, but with any regulated industry, it's just how often, is there perhaps a site visit done just to ensure that things, you know, are the way they are supposed to be?
Yep, and I did want to note, per the ponding on the site, we have companion to the development agreement, which is not in front of you tonight, but will be. We have a whole agreement on stormwater requirements, and one of the things that's covered in there quite extensively, by its own agreement, a stormwater review, make sure that everything's kept in compliance, as with our city agenda. We'll come and take a look at that. That's something new we began with Belzer Car Dealership, which is the second one, where we actually have a stormwater improvement agreement to monitor if those improvements are maintained and looked at, not just, it's done, we don't, you know, go back and revisit it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Council?
Just one. I mean, you know, my dad and my grandpa's own up. I'm sympathetic to the daycare. However, I don't see, you know, they're a free market society, and there has been, you know, market research done on this. I don't see any reason to deny it. I do share the concern. You know, you do have the flood pooling right outside the door to the daycare. What kind of fencing did you agree to put up or over?
I think at this point, we haven't agreed to a specific type unless you want to figure otherwise.
It'll be a complete screen.
Yeah, I think we're open to kind of any.
It's not something that the kids could get in?
No, no, no. It'd be on the, I don't know, Rick, you can see my pointer here, kind of on the west side of the outlot here, and then the north side of the outlot, so.
And it won't just be pooling, which drains out right away, so there won't be insects and stuff building up in there for?
Well, I can't say there wouldn't be that for sure, but this would be dedicated to the city as a city pond. Both these northern pond areas are part of the public stormwater system. They drain the public road, and then they also take some stormwater from the roof drains only on the property, which is considered clean water. And we could have mosquito control actually treat those areas as city ponds, just like we would any other city area in town.
And that's not too close to our water level underground, so that our water tank a couple miles away would be affected. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I know it's not a public hearing, but I'm willing to allow Chantel to say a few words to the council.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me address my concerns. I feel like I'm going to have to live it. But I want to get through with you that it's not necessarily the pond that's there, because I've been made aware now it's a basin that's only catching, Emily, sorry, Emily made me aware that it's only catching the clean water from the tops of the canopies that's going in there, so that's great. I was under the impression that it would be partially fenced in, because if somebody does get in there, not my kids at the childcare, I'm not worried about that. But in the community, if anybody gets in there, they need to be able to get out. So, to be a complete enclosure is new for me. It's just, there's so many things that need to be looked at with this project, and I appreciate your concern too, Rick. My concern is not the pond necessarily, but the exhaust that these kids are breathing in. I've got information after information that it's not healthy for them. To me, like, a gas station and a school do not mix. Like, 250 feet to 450 feet away, that's ridiculous. It just doesn't seem safe without any mitigation barriers or anything like that. That is my main concern. Can I have a show of hands if you guys read my email? Okay. Did you have, like, a feeling of, oh, okay, I understand the concern of the health and safety of the kids?
May I ask how often the children are outdoors during a given day? And I realize it's weather-based.
Absolutely. So, Minnesota statutes actually require us to be outside daily, and the children are outside for an hour a day, twice a day.
Thank you.
Attention, question. I understand the hazard of it, but I didn't, I didn't see the degree to be consistent with what we're talking about here. The article that you referred us to, dealing with California, is such a drastic different circumstance with the freeway transportation and the difference of living space within that, that it didn't seem to be comparable when you're talking about the small bits that you're talking about.
Yeah.
We have circumstances here in New Prague and Twin Cities that are similar to this that's been going a long time, so it didn't seem to be comparable with what the information that you're sending in the email.
Thank you for that, Bruce. I will make a mention that I have voluntarily said that I would complete a study to determine this, but I need more time. These studies aren't done every year and in every state, but the EPA puts them out for not just Minnesota, but nationwide. So, there goes another thing that we need more time, because I can have you talk to Mark, that actually works at the EPA in the diesel section. I don't even know what his title is. He'll tell you a lot of information. I could have him here. They need more time. We're talking about government people. I want you to know that I've talked to people in various agencies, and they're willing to help, but they need time. It's government, it's end of the year, people are busy, and this is why we need some more time.
How much time?
If we can do the 60 days, that would help. And the time is needed to determine this. Like, so, I just want you to know. So, I've talked to Minnesota Pollution Control, Minnesota Department of Health. Did you see their recommendation? Did you guys read the letter from the Minnesota Department of Health?
I just received it today and unfortunately have not had an opportunity.
Okay. Can I give time to either read it myself or for you guys to read it, because I think that's pretty strong? And I'm trying to give you guys the proof that you want. Just understand that proof that you want doesn't always exist. It's not just for New Prague, and these studies are not done on a regular basis. So, yes, they've done some things to clean up fuel exhaust, absolutely, but it's not enough. There's still health risks. That PM I talked about before that you guys didn't like, the Minnesota diesel, because it was done in 2011 or '07, there's not that much of a difference to do another study. There just isn't. And if you took the time to research that or let somebody, you know, give some time, somebody else can come and tell you if you don't believe me or the statistics that I'm giving you. It's not safe for the kids. So, I have all of these places working with me to give me answers and to prove that it's not safe.
Chantel. I appreciate your passion, and I appreciate that this is your business and that you've got children, that you're trying to ensure their safety. Please, I'm not trying to be nasty or anything, but where was this passion when the first QuickTrip was built?
It's not right across the street from me.
But there are people that live in that area that would have been affected.
Did they, what did they do?
Well, I'm not, I'm not attacking. I'm just kind of curious that now that it's literally in your backyard, then there is this passion that?
Because it affects our community. It affects the kids. There's 70-some kids out there. I could not not do anything. Do you understand that I am, I could be putting my own foot in my mouth? Like, I understand the risk I'm taking, because if it goes through and now parents see what all these associations say and the risks that I'm going to continue to fight for, they're not going to bring their kids. They're one way. I wouldn't.
Well, but I think someone on council here has also heard of some of the parents saying how convenient it's going to be to be able to go across the street and, and make use of this, the market, et cetera, and so.
How convenient is it going to the hospital and getting, you know, your blood cells counted and cancer, asthma? Things happen. Not to mention, I have rules to follow. 9503.0155 sub, sub part 7D. I have to follow those. Those have to do with hazardous material and environment.
On your site?
On my site. And I'm licensed by, yeah, on my site. Anything that comes on my site, I have to take care of it.
But Chantel, in the, at the last meeting, we gave several examples of daycare centers right next to QuickTrips or holiday gas stations that they do it out of convenience for some of the parents, you know, that want to do a one, pick my kid up and run in right before I grab my kid, pick up a rotisserie chicken and some potatoes and pick up my kit, you know?
Right, and I understand that, but convenience cannot trump health.
Well, but I'm just curious here, because you have another place in Bell Plains, is that correct?
That's correct.
A daycare center?
It's early learning childcare, yes.
Okay, early learning childcare. And that is right next to a hazardous waste generator, the city of, city of Bell Plains Public Works Garage?
No, it's not.
It, it isn't? That's the information I have. It's directly next door? It's right next door?
There's not, under what I know, there's no hazardous waste. I will check into that too.
How long were you, how long is that facility, how long have you owned your building right next door?
I don't own it. I lease it.
You lease it?
Yes.
But, and so you're saying you were unaware of a hazardous waste generator?
I was completely unaware of that. We actually used that building as an evacuation. I've never seen anything.
Okay.
So I will check into that.
Yeah.
And can I ask why that's relevant?
It's relevant just because, again, going back to the passion thing, I mean, sometimes people get caught up in, and I'm not saying this, and I'm not attacking you either, right? Matter of fact, I was on your side. You brought up some very valid points at the planning commission that we've tried to address. But, you know, you're talking about these fumes, and I'm an asthmatic, and I have been since a kid, whether that was environmental or genetic, who knows. But, what I'm trying to say is, is that the vapors and the fumes that you're literally a foot away from, and your children are on the other side of the building, not that there couldn't be some of that, but really, only if it's coming, the wind would be coming from the south. Now, that might be 50% of the time, I don't know. But, obviously, it could be coming from the west, and those fumes are going to be heading to the east. They could be coming out of the north, and it's going to be heading south away from your building. So.
Again, I have prevailing wind studies as well that were taken from the Lakeville Airport.
That's great. That's just great. I'm just curious, though, why we're not seeing the state putting a kibosh to something like this.
It's in the works.
They're popped up all over. We gave several examples of neighboring communities.
Exactly, and why? Because of money. It's money-driven, and that's not what I'm about. That's not what I'm here to offer the community. And those places came in after by choice. It doesn't make it right. That's why there's a whole department in DHS working towards this.
So, with the, I mean, we're Arizona, the commercial area. So with the, I mean, we're, you're zoned in a commercial area. I guess I'm going to defer to council, legal council too.
Okay.
If it's zoned properly, is there, I mean, would we, would it potentially put the city at risk of, of litigation? I mean, we read about it all the time, developers sue cities because they don't like it.
It's allowable use with conditional uses you're dealing with right now. As Ken has pointed out, there is nothing that we have before us right now that says we should not issue this condition. There's nothing before you that would say do that. There's nothing from a state regulation standpoint, there's nothing from the federal EPA standpoint. Those are not the standards that exist right now. So, and again, I, I know we got a letter that, that was passed on from the Minnesota Department of Health. I think the letter's inappropriate. There are no standards that apply. I don't know why this individual stated the things that were stated there, so I don't think it's something you can really rely on because there are no regulations that apply as that are stated in this letter. If there were, the Department of Health would have something, would have a say here. You're purely dealing with a land use issue right now. As you pointed out, Sean, it's allowed by conditional use, that's what you have to put it right.
But if we were to deny it or delay it or something, would that put, I mean, given what you just stated, that there is no precedent, no reason for us to really stop it, given all the statutes and laws that are out there, would that, could that put the city in a, in a legal position that they could come back and sue us?
That position is worse.
I'm not saying QuickTrip would, I understand, because I read about that all the time where councils deny things for stuff that there's no precedent and then they're all going to trouble.
That's a less desirable position to be in. That's correct.
And I'm not looking for a denial either, an extension of time to educate perhaps, but if not, then put some conditions into the conditional use permit.
Such as the mitigation and the?
Yeah, so the car wash doors remaining closed, obviously with one of them, a strict no idling policy that's enforced, and agreeing to complete the proper mitigation determined that's needed, whether it's by the Minnesota Department of Health or whoever wants to figure it out. That's who's willing to do the study for me.
And have it done in 60 days?
That I don't know.
Well, you, I asked you when you said 60 days, okay, I'm not.
You asked me how long I wanted the extension and I said 60 days. You didn't ask me how long I want the study was going to take.
Okay, so.
These are next steps. I've been diligently working on multiple things, so I would definitely find that out.
Who would be paying the cost of the study that you?
That would be me.
And that is, what is the cost?
Well, there's definitely grants out there, so the Minnesota Department of Health is willing to help me with that, but we don't have an actual cost yet.
I just, I, I don't see the city council putting themselves at legal risk for a problem that you think exists without proper proof that that's going to cause the kids problems. Like I say, I'm, I'm, I don't see a way to stop it, to be quite honest, given you have other gas stations in that area.
Any other questions or comments, Chantel?
I guess I just want to make the comment, I, I've scott down the royal letter support for your situation too, and I would agree with some of the statements that are, your business is a great lawsuit and you certainly need all the daycares and I feel bad that, that you feel that you're in this situation. I did look at the letter from the Minnesota Department of Health, I'm very disappointed on the person that wrote it and how it was written. It's a very could be, it's not definitive by any matter, and as the attorney said, it's not, if they have the ability to do something, they've never done it before or in any other situations, so it's a lot of, it's not a lot of real meat to this letter.
Absolutely, and part of her thing was, is I know you need this by Monday, so here's what we can give you. They're still doing work behind the scenes right now.
Right.
There's more information, they need to put that together too.
But Minnesota Department of Health shouldn't be, in my opinion, operating that man or just writing the letter that way when they're not taking any action or just citing maybes and could be's kind of thing.
And I guess the letter is to say that they will, they need more time. So that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
They didn't read any request of us, I didn't read any request of us in this letter. But my only other comment is that I can't, I don't see a reason that I wouldn't support it either, and I, I understand where you're coming from, and as I said, I value you as a business for Uprague and a taxpayer as well.
Now, Chantel, at my request, you did meet with Ken and QuickTrip.
Yes.
And what can you say about that meeting? I mean, do you feel you've got any answer? Do you feel?
No. A lot of the drift I got out of the comments I've received is you were looking for proof that it wouldn't happen, that this couldn't cause asthma or this couldn't cause cancer and stuff like that. And if you're looking for proof like that, that to me is like, well, not feel because that just, you can't say that there's certain, one certain cause that can create asthma or cancer or any other health issues. To, to limit this in that it's the fumes that are going to create possible or you want to prove that these wouldn't cause the issues, it would be like me saying, show me that the proof is not going to happen if we, if you didn't have this next.
Right. So the reason I was asking for that is because they rebuttled everything that I gave them and said it was old information, and so I went back and gave different information. So I'm like, hey, throw me something that says it's okay because then I can, I can let my kids play outside, I can keep my business here, you know? That's all I was asking for. Like saying it's okay, not proof that nothing, you know, we all know we take risks walking across the street, I'm not asking for that.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you want to make any more statements, Ken?
I do want to say that the car wash is about 200 feet, the gas pumps are about 350 feet and the diesel pumps are like 440 feet. And again, I do have to follow NAC standards, Environmental Health 9D, and I have to follow Minnesota statutes, 9503, which will not be followed. And quite frankly, Rule 3 mandated reporting statute 626 dot 556 states all this right on there about keeping environmental air quality safe for kids. So I'm not just filling anybody full of anything, this needs to happen.
Do you monitor that or what?
The state does, monitors the air quality, so obviously if you're next to more pollution, so let's just say your grandchild came to our center, okay? And you have a concern that the air that he's breathing outside is not safe. You call Minnesota, DHS, sorry, call DHS and you report that and they come out and check it. And that's, that's how they determine it.
Right, and that would be great, but we don't know if that would even register on there, you know, that would be, there'd be a problem with that.
Right, and that's what I want, time to say that it, find out if it's going to or not.
But how are you going to know that?
There's studies that you can do at gas stations and at QuickTrip license, we can do it right here in Uprague, at the gas station here.
So if, let's, let's say you're absolutely right and the state comes out and does a test in back where the children play two hours a day, and it comes back that there is some fuel, well, then the state's going to put regulations on QuickTrip, I'm guessing, and make mitigation issues or make, force them to do some type of mitigation, right? Is that typically how it would probably, it wouldn't be the city that would enforce that, it would be the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'm fine with that, if you think that were the case.
Yeah.
You know, so your protection is there, I mean, if.
Right, but meanwhile, they forget it all in already and, you know, I mean, that, that's my concern. Why would I expose them to it?
You don't know if you are exposing them though.
And that's why I want to find out.
Well, no, what I'm saying is.
All the evidence that they have proves that I'm exposing, that would expose them to it.
But couldn't you, on the first day that QuickTrip's open and your kids are out playing out back, couldn't you raise concerns with the Minnesota Department of Health and say, I'm a little worried about this, I can smell some diesel fuel or something for?
I absolutely can.
Right, and I would recommend that you do that.
And I'm trying to be proactive instead of reactive, so then we don't have to rebuild and put in things to mitigate.
But that is, that is kind of proactive, though it doesn't kill the project because we don't have any proof that there will be a problem yet, and in fact, everything in the study that we have says it, it works there, and everything we've heard from the state statutes already says that we're totally in compliance, but that would be an avenue for you. And again, it's not the city that would have to worry about that, the state Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Health would contact QuickTrip and actually make you, make them put in the mitigation that you're talking about now, without delaying it from day one. If you wanted to call day one, I don't know how long it takes them to get out there, but you could literally do that.
I literally could. And again, I'm not trying to kill your project, that's not what I'm trying to do, and, and like you say, you're trying to follow statutes, so am I. So I'm still, I moved in here in 2008 and I've been following statutes since then, so now suddenly I'm not able to? I don't think that's right.
Of course, of course you still have to, it's, it's on your property, so you would have to.
Right, but I'm saying that that is going to make those, me not be able to follow those statutes anymore.
Not necessarily. You don't.
Potentially, that's what I'm trying to determine. Right, correct, that's what I want to do the research on.
But on any given day, prevailing winds and any other different circumstances, you know, you, you can't just make an emphatical statement that this is going to cause you not to follow statutes.
I'm not making a statement, I'm saying we need more time to determine for sure. I'm not trying to make statements.
Chantel, is there any data that you have of any daycare that have been cited for this purpose that have been near daycares? Because I'm very well aware the state, very strict licensure for daycares.
Would that make a difference?
Well, certainly, but we're not aware of that ever happening.
Okay, but if, if that information is available, would that make a difference?
Well, to understand what does Minnesota Pollution Control do about it then if a daycare is cited? And I'm familiar with daycares, I've been involved in early childhood projects and things and Scott County daycare licensure, and I've never heard of that.
And that's Rule 2. I follow Rule 3, 9503.
So I'm just not familiar with any, anyone that's been cited for what you're describing.
Yeah. I can certainly look into that if that'll make a difference.
Take an initiative to try to address it statewide, not just.
And there is an initiative that's early on right now that there's grants for working on that.
But are you familiar with anyone that's been cited as a daycare? You've been in the business a long time.
I have resources I can look for sure.
I checked with, I checked with licensing that does a daycare licensing for the state that is not anything that would shut them down. They confirmed that with me, that is in the packet of materials.
And I.
You cannot control what's on your property, how in the world are they going to shut you down for that? It's not pollution that they're generating at their daycare, they're wanting you to control what you can control on your site.
And I'm telling you, the state, the same place, DHS is exactly who told me of 9503 these subparts and saying that mandated reporting would fall in there. So this is exactly what I'm trying to say, like, they're telling me one thing and him another, and like even with NAC, Ken said that NAC told them there's nothing. There's a whole section on it. So I just don't know why the information is so different when they're talking to me and talking to Ken. That's why I'm.
I have it in writing, there's nothing that would jeopardize your accreditation.
Yeah, and I have the accreditation right here.
Yep.
Environmental Health.
Yep.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we have a difference of opinion regarding that subject, but any other comments you want to make, Chantel?
No, I just hope that we can at least extend it and I'm not trying to kill the project. I just want to extend it and find out if we can make a final, is it safe or not? What can we do to mitigate this before it happens and 120 days later, we find out all this stuff and then it's a big disaster.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any comments from the council? Then I guess I will look for a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion for a resolution approving the conditional use permit C32019 to allow the construction of new 7,000 acre square foot convenience store, attached car garage, or car wash and associated fuel canopies, M101 Chukowski or Chubisky Avenue.
So I have a motion by rec. Second by anyone?
Second.
Yeah, you got a second by Bruce Wolf. There's any other comments?
Just make the comment that the resolution does include the compliance with state federal laws, which would include adherence to Minnesota pollution controls, and that would be a way to get at any issues that we're talking about here, and that the city too could be involved in if something would come up that we would have recourse to. In that matter, this is conditional use.
Okay, so noted. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, it passes 5-0. Next, Ken, on the Plenary Final Plaid.
All right, next on the agenda is a review of the Plenary Final Plaid of QuickTrip 1090. This Plenary Final Plaid was also in front of the Planning Commission back on November 20th. It's a plaid that includes 6.45 acres, that included one lot to the QuickTrip store and then the two all lots with the retention basins on them, which would be dedicated to the city stormwater agreement that we referenced in our earlier discussion. Three existing parcels are included in the plaid, two of them are kind of a non-wooded area right up front of the daycare and then the other one's kind of a wooded property with an existing single family home on it, so that includes the property being platted. We've already talked about the most QuickTrip store. Additionally, just to extend, First Street Northeast of the North East of the property, and as I noted prior MOU with Scott County, that provided for the direction they all had to go, and then required a local stub road, I call it, which they have named George Avenue to provide access from the west to K. Witt, Robert Yost, and then the other property as well in general vicinity, because they would not have access from Mountain Avenue or from Highway 19. We did have comments received again from Chantel during this public hearing and Mizorota as well, both from Members of Mount St. Louis Academy relating to traffic, that's stormwater project that's east of the daycare, and then they did have questions about construction staging along with other questions that were more pertinent to the CUP. So we talked about construction staging for obviously the road construction, they're not able to hinder travel and passage on First Street Northeast certainly in front of the daycare, whether they're constructing the store or constructing the public road, need to keep that open and available for the daycare to continue to utilize that for their access into the building. One thing that was noted during the review of the plaid was that the traffic impact study did need to be updated, it had not accommodated the inclusion of George Avenue and the alignment of First Street Northeast as is in the plan in front of you. They did modify the traffic impact study, our city engineer reviewed that revised study and conferred with all their findings. My colleague, S.E., who's actually the engineer, our traffic engineer that did that review, noted that the level of service is maintained at Level A, which you can't get any higher level of service than A on the traffic study. They are not required to do any additional improvements, no additional traffic signals returned, anything that are required, and it'll still function as Level of Service A after it's constructed. Basically, the study looks at what exists there today and then how it's functioning after the QuickTrip store were, were developed. Certainly, the traffic impact study follows our set of guidelines and then traffic engineering generally accepted practices as well. We did have two wetlands in the site that were found to be incidental, they're actually in a ditch along the highway, so look on the plate, you see wetlands out there, but they're not true wetlands, they were created on the highway drainage program. Our project was completed back in 2000. was completed back in 2007. Ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval of the forty zero votes. So staff does recommend, and the planning commission recommends approval of the one finding and the nine conditions listed in the staff report. This is kind of a preliminary plat drawing here, you can see the existing single family home and the outbuildings that are located on that property, and then the portions of First Street, and then George Avenue that would be dedicated and constructed as public roadways, stormwater agreement will address that Outlet A and Outlet B, the retention basins will be dedicated to the city, and we'll have that forthcoming development agreements with the stormwater ponding included in there at future meeting council. And then this is kind of clean up final plat, showing the two already planted lots with an heavy timber condition, and the remainder is kind of a five acre unplanted land that make up that total property. MINDID did review the plat, they're obtaining their appropriate dedication for the state highway right of way, as noted on kind of the southeast corner of the plat there, and we have our appropriate easements from the permit. This drawing, I just wanted to point out, there was concerns from K. Witt that they would have access from the local stub road, George Avenue, this is just kind of a general review, I went over with the city engineer Chris Cabot to determine how that could be terminated, to provide access to the K. Witt property, and Mr. Gilb, and then this other commercial property here, and as you can see, this would provide kind of an equitable cul-de-sac type design for those three properties to access, have not had any concern noted from any of those parties at this point. Just more photos you've already looked at. So I think with that, that's all I have to say.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Or Ken?
I believe Rombank is a co-applicant in this.
They are a co-applicant.
Has not changed hands yet.
Has not changed.
Has there been any correspondence or any information, I think Rombank as far as?
I haven't seen nothing from Rombank, other than signing applications with their name on it as owner, and then signing as a co-applicant.
So they, do they have any issues with the conditions?
Not that I'm aware of at this point. Probably a better comment for QuickTrip and their First Street, if they have.
Not that we're aware of either, to add and mention it, we're working with, we're working with Rombank to get this transaction finalized, so they're a nice partnership.
How does this work for it to be continued upon in the closing?
Oh, we obviously would not sign the plat and have it required at the county until after they close on the property, and their, QuickTrip is the owner of the property, then they complete the plat, actually, the milers have been sent to the county for their review, QuickTrip shown as the owner, so obviously they would close, the plat would probably be recorded, very short.
So what is the legal twitch that allows us not to sign it once we approve it?
They have to get all the, basically all the, the plat in order, Scott has to do this final review?
Yeah.
Or change his hands?
It will be, yes, because the plat will have their name only on it, so the requirement would be from the city attorney's standpoint, that title is passed to.
So we don't need to list that as a.
We have it in the development agreement when we go forward.
Always advocating care about that point.
Yes. Yeah, rather than spell those out in here, we just say a development agreement is required, and then that's from the agreement forward, in the development. Scott's office is very good at requiring title opinions prior to signing.
And the sidewalk that's mentioned is from where?
Sidewalk along the east side of Chulutsky Avenue, northeast from the highway to the corner of First Street, and then it would also extend along the north side of First Street, sorry, the side in front of the daycare, this would extend that, obviously, to the edge of their property, and then we would expect that to reach all the way to Alton at some point in the future per our sidewalk. So it'll provide that connection all the way from the end of First Street down to the highway, and then back into the rest of the system, which, there isn't great sidewalk in this area, but this will connect up to what we have. We require it on one side of all public streets, this will provide that.
Any other questions or comments?
There's no sidewalk from the sidewalk to the property. So the main street sidewalk to the building, is there a sidewalk there?
Going into parking lot?
You're talking from the building, entrance of the building?
Yes, the new.
Where the parking lot.
That was one of the conditions in the condition's permit, and their new plans actually show that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I look for a motion to approve the preliminary final plat.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Maggie Bass, there's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Mike, I assume you're taking the next item?
I will, in front of you tonight is the consideration of adopting an ordinance amendment to our city liquor ordinance under chapter one ten, titled eleven of the U.S. City Code, and the advantages, at the December meeting, you considered the introduction of this ordinance that under section one ten, one five, subsection G, items two and three are proposing to increase the hours of operation on Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. for those two sections, section two and three, as well as in section one ten twenty hundred, conditions of license, the addition of language that authorizes on sale licenses to sell between the two, excuse me, although the Minnesota state statute authorizes on sale licenses to sell intoxicated liquor, or three two malt liquor between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. by permit, this ordinance section restricts that to 1:00 a.m. and 1:00 a.m. only, and beyond that would be prohibited. So those are the changes that you've incorporated and considered at the December second meeting, if you're agreeing with that, your action tonight should be to consider adopting the ordinance as amended, we would anticipate the newspaper would publish on December twenty sixth, and so it would be available for use by any of the local businesses with Sunday liquor, that they could be getting utilized on December twenty ninth.
Okay.
Is there being opposition for this?
I have heard nothing, that's come from my office.
I have not had any communication either, so. Okay, so this will be the final reading of the ordinance.
And the adoption.
And the adoption. I guess I'll make the motion to approve the final reading and adoption of the changes to our ordinance regarding Sunday liquor starting at 1:00 a.m. versus ten.
I'll second.
You got a second by Maggie Bass?
No, I want a second.
Maggie, Rick was trying to get in there, I don't know why. Okay, if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Next, Mike, are you going to take this, or?
I'll take the next.
Are we going to let Scott talk a little bit on this?
I'll take a stab at it, and then I'll re-miss that, I'll let him pick up, we clean up inner, if need be, if you recall, a number of weeks ago, we had identified to you that we were going to be seeing five of the nine charter commission terms, would be the, the four-year terms would be expiring here on December thirty first of 2019, and talking to you as to what direction and how you wanted to head to consider refilling those positions, you asked me to get in contact with the various members that were serving on the charter commission, to find out if they were interested in serving, if not, I would report back and take a look at where you might want to go to solicit additional public participation in that, that when we made that contact, all five members were interested in reserving, and so we put that together, should you decide and elect to consider moving forward with the adoption of tonight's resolution, is that it is reset up with those five individuals, Mr. Bartucci, Mary Clint, Mr. McLeod, Alton Ryan, and Mr. Weisler, all could be considered for reappointment, that your approval of the enclosed resolution, if you are to adopt it tonight, would then be submitted to the district court judge, who actually is the authority in making appointments to the charter commission.
What was this, Maggie, was it going to be?
Their term was up. These are people whose terms were up at the end of this year.
Oh, okay. And you're just five, what is there, is it a nine?
Four, nine.
Nine person charter commission, and of the five of you are up for, their term was up at the end of this year.
Is that the staggering the statute? Yes, it's five.
Yeah, generally, we meet once per year, but we can certainly meet more often if there are other items that we want to discuss regarding each charter, I think my statute would be.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I got a motion for Rick Siler to approve the resolution.
Second.
I got a second by Sean Ryan, if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Passes five zero. This next one must be Patty, isn't it?
It is.
She's sitting there so patiently.
Mayor and Council, following the preparation of the draft budgets from August to December, and the holding of the public meeting on December second, the city's proposed 2020 total budget, which includes the general fund, the enterprise funds, and the ambulance EDA, EDA industrial, golf, and stormwater, and special revenue funds, and capital, and the capital projects and debt service funds totaling thirty-five million eight hundred ninety thousand. I want to point out that part of that amount relates to our capital project for our 2020, about eleven thousand dollars, or eleven million dollars. Since the electric and the golf budget workshops, there have been a couple events that have occurred that have not been brought up within the budget meetings, they've come to light just the last month, and the council will reserve the right to amend both of those budgets at a later time in 2020. At this time, staff is asking that the mayor and the council review and approve resolution adopting the 2020 total budgets and 2020, 2029 capital improvement plan.
So the only question would be that this budget relates to the next item, which would keep the levy and discuss two point eight six or a part two point nine or whatever. Okay, anyone else have any questions? The 2020 budget?
I think we've spent a lot of time in our workshops going through it, so hopefully there aren't any surprise budgets.
Any other comments? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the 2020 city budgets, the capital improvement plan, so, I got a motion by Rick Siler. I got a second by Sean Ryan, if there's no other comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
All right.
Passes, thank you Patty for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mike, I assume you're doing the tax levy part?
I will. Based on the work that the council conducted in October and November with the taxation hearing, and was ultimately held on December second, the council has effectively reused the preliminary levy that was up about eight percent, but that has been decreased down to about a two point eight six percent levy, that was increased the general fund to cover employee personnel costs, and to cover our newer technology upgrades and software upgrades for, and for providing ongoing managed activity services, no change in the golf course transfer to cover principal interest, no change in our debt service fund, no change in our EDA levy, so again, those levies up a little over a hundred and nineteen thousand, or two point eight six percent for 2020.
Any questions from Mike? Is there any? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand and, this would be adopting the 2020 property tax levy, right?
It's adopting, the correct terminology in terms of the resolution, is adopting the 2019 property tax levy payable in 2020.
Okay.
That's how that works.
Then I will make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass, there's no other comments?
Just make a comment that I, after a lot of hard work, I think it's great that we're seeing a tax rate, we can't calculate exactly what that will be, but certainly a tax rate that's going down by two or three percent, I think you calculated fifty four, point five percent, now to fifty seven, and over the long term, I think that's really, that 's really affects what the individual taxpayers are paying.
Yeah, in light of the other cities around us, and what their levy is looking like as well.
So we are benefiting from the increase in tax capacity, and hopefully we'll have that, maybe a bump up next year for that too, that will help us in the same regard, but a decrease in the tax rate is a very good thing.
Okay, I made the motion, so by Maggie Bass, if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the levy is approved. Next, approval of compensation plan.
Guess I get that one as well.
Yeah, well, unless you want to send Patty back up.
What plan? She's still here?
Yeah, Patty, she's.
I think she's saying, I'll, I'll take it there. But following the council's work on the budget over October, November, one of the important items that's considered in that process is what the council's going to do as it relates to adjustments to the city's compensation, the plan for 2020, sometimes in the past, or at times in the past, we've followed, depending on what the labor agreement has been with the police union, however, this year, we're not currently settled at this time, and as such, what we have in front of you, as we had discussion in preparation of the 2020 budget, is a compensation plan that would be adjusted by three percent, has been included in all of departmental estimates, general fund, and all of the appropriate enterprise funds, and so that revision to the 2020 plan is reflected in what you see on the backside of this memo, and based on how the council's handled this in the past, we're recommending the adoption of the 2020 compensation plan as we have included it in the proposed 2020 budget.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments tonight on that? I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the compensation plan.
Some vote?
Got a motion by Maggie Bass, I guess I'll make a second. So if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Next, Mike?
This one in trying to, I take a little more summary to bring you up to speed. This one in trying to take a little more summary to bring me up to speed. On the 26th of November, the New Craig Golf Board reviewed various budgetary options and alternatives associated with trying to assemble their 2020 budget as related to revenues and expense reductions, trying to get it as close as possible to be balanced with the exception of depreciation. After extensive deliberations, as they took a look at various alternatives, they were summarized and presented to the council on December 9th here in a special meeting that we had with the golf board in attendance. I think we spent about two hours going through a significant amount of golf materials and their budget and recommendations. So what you saw that night is that they had looked at trying to reduce expenditures by about $30,000 to get them down within, I believe it was about $60,000, about $6,500, $6,400, with the exception of depreciation, of trying to get that budget balanced for 2020. And in there, they had provided an overview list showing the minutes attached behind this memo is their ideas and concepts. They went through those formal recommendations to you on December 9th. In that presentation, as I said, we looked at the budget, we took a look at the current financial condition through the end of November, we took a look at the historical overview of the city's audited financials on the golf operations from 2012 through 2018, recognizing that five out of the last seven fiscal years have produced a hint on that loss in the golf budget. We took a look at the trend analysis, review of the major golf revenue sources from memberships to green fees, to cart fees, to food and beverage area of the operations. And after reviewing all of that information, and after significant discussion between the council and the golf board representatives, and in the discussion with the council, and the council electing to not want to provide any additional financial assistance, that being property tax support to golf operations, one of the expense reduction options that they recommended was to consider the layoff of our two full-time golf staff here in the off-season. And specifically, what they're recommending and looking at is to consider the layoff of these two full-time employees for the month of January, with the possibility that depending on how the financial operation and that picture, what that looks like, that there could possibly be something additionally recommended later in the year. This recommendation wasn't taken lightly. It came easily. The estimated expense savings for one month is a little over $11,000. And so it was just one of the component pieces in there as it related to personnel, that in order to undertake that action, in accordance with the city's layoff policy copy, which I included, it requires action taken by you as the governing body to authorize the layoff of those positions. And as you can see from what I've just highlighted, is that it's really a shortage of funds and trying to solve some of their expenditure challenges and issues due to the fact that revenues have been very challenged here in recent years, that it does require two weeks' notice to the employee. It requires approval of the governing body. So that's the reason we have it on the agenda, and that is the recommendation from the golf board.
Mike, I just have a question. Unfortunately, my copy here didn't have the layoff policy attached to it. So...
The last page, it should be the very...
Did I miss something?
Did everybody...
Oh, oh, this, sorry.
Yeah, it's the paragraph.
It's just the paragraph, okay. All right.
Steve Sandman.
All right. So sorry, I missed that. So do either of these individuals, are they going to lose health insurance for those that...
They would for that one, that it would be their option if they wanted to pay for that, had to pick that up under the current rates that we have.
Okay, great. All right, good. Just so that they've got something optional. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the layoff of the full-time golf until the end of January. Got a second by Rick Siler. What's on my...
Chuck, did you include, including they're just, it's really the shortage of funds, that it's an expense issue, as the policy lays, because it's necessary because of a shortage of work or funds, it's not the shortage of work.
Right, shortage of funds and to put the health budget into balance. I meant I have a motion, if I'm at that. Rick is accepting that with the amendment, so there's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay.
Then as soon as the end of the year, are you going to be okay in the last few weeks of December?
Well, that's something that was, we're going to be discussing, how revenues go. We're going to monitor that. And if revenues are behind what we think they should be, we might have to do additional allowance again.
I meant in the next two weeks, three weeks.
What's that?
Do you have a cash shortage? Or is there enough funds for December to...
We have enough funds to get through December, I guess. Patty?
Well, we haven't, I don't have everything in yet, because I'll still be getting some bills from December, and I don't know what events are taking place yet in December, but it's real slim.
Yeah. Well, I know that he's doing a deal on Saturday, customer appreciation, and, you know, I'm like myself, I'm going to pay my membership that day, and I know a couple other people are going to do that, too. So we might get some generation of cash.
I know last year, they did get about $60,000 in memberships, but I don't know what that's going to mean for this year.
Okay.
So we just talked in passing at the last meeting, but just assuming we're supportive of funding and operating Ryan for cash flow shortages, and also they have a monthly accounting from the golf course, financial company to watch that.
We will.
So will you bring that to the January, the first meeting in January, then, if infusion is needed?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to bring that in January, then, if an infusion is needed?
Yeah, I will bring it. Probably not the first meeting, but the second meeting.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Next, Kim. This is your third shot at this.
As always, I do not want to waste your time.
Do you have a body camera?
I do not. So this evening, I just wanted to have a final review of the policy and answer any questions or take any comments from the council regarding the policy. You guys have had it, it's been in the same form the last two meetings anyways, this one and the previous, it was in the same form, so...
So Scott, have you had an opportunity to review it?
I have reviewed it, as well as Dave Anderson, my office reviewer, previously.
Yeah. Okay. And everything?
It's acceptable, yes.
Okay.
And there's no action required or another...
Informational...
Right.
Yeah.
The policy would be amenable at any time?
It is, yes.
At council discretion, if, as we move forward in this, we see problems or things that need to be changed?
Yeah, I would take that input. I mean, ultimately, I do the policies for the police department, and I would take input from the council.
No. Is it council's discretion to change that, or is that up to the chief to...
If you direct the chief, the chief will change it, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
And the packet, there were these two pages, are they texts?
They were, the first two were emails that I had received directly, and then the others were Facebook comments.
Facebook comments, were they solicited?
I posted on Facebook directing everybody to our website to give feedback to my email address.
Okay.
And in that posting, I asked them not to make comments on Facebook. Some chose to make comments.
So these are on what, what Facebook site?
New Craig Police Department.
Oh, okay.
Nobody ever looks at it or anything like that.
Well, the second email is particularly compelling, I guess, the suicide issue. And you want to speak to that?
Yeah. By statute, chapter 13 directs the classification of videos already. In that case, because of the sensibilities of it, I would say it is private information, and it's not going to be just released in...
Are there other instances, then? I mean, if you had a child who's at all underage, would be private?
Yeah, for the most part, they are generally considered private. In the, in the policy, it does state there are three or four bullets that indicate that they are not private, but made public.
Well, I'm fine with that.
Then if this is approved, is this the last step with implementation? Are you going to try them on tomorrow, or...
Well, we have been using them on a trial basis, but yeah, then, once we review this with our officers in a direct contact, then this would be the policy of the City of New Craig Police Department, and that would be in full force in a...
And I know you said it's the third time, but I appreciate that it's been open and discussed, and people have been given the ability to make comments.
What would you expect the effective date of the policy to be? What are you projecting that to be?
I would probably look at the first of the year, to start 2020 with it, provided, yeah, we review with the officers. We did, at our last meeting was January, or I'm sorry, December 6th, the night of Cray of Lights, we had a meeting prior to going out and working the detail. So we've reviewed it pretty well. I would just let them know this is our final draft, and direct them for any questions, but then it would be in force.
Okay. So I counted seven different people, does that sound right, that actually responded, had some citizen input?
Well, some of the responses, that would be right, with the two emails and then some of the comments.
Some people had several emails, but we saw seven different names.
Yeah.
And that was about it, that they're...
Yeah, but, well, a lot of the Facebook comments were not about policy. They were talking back and forth or making comments to themselves.
Okay. What, I know I've asked you this before, what did you decide on the buffering of the camera? Are you still stuck on 30 seconds, or...
I would recommend that we do 30 seconds with audio. At the, currently, we have the resolution set at the highest resolution. With that resolution, you're able to go back a minute and a half for total buffering, if you choose to do that. The standard across the nation is 30 seconds, and with that 30 seconds, about half of them are doing with audio, half of them are going without. The only department that I know of in the country is LAPD that does the full two minutes. That's the only department.
Why would you say that would be? And why is the standard 30 seconds, or...
That's just, that is the standard, and when I talk to Axion, the trainer anyways, he just indicated that it's, it takes a snippet of the previous events that were going on, but they've determined that anything before 30 seconds was not generating anything evidentiary value at all, that it wasn't really...
Jermaine?
Yeah, necessary to be taking that. LAPD was looking at their two minutes in an effort to be able to get some more of that response kind of to certain calls, that when an officer is driving to the call, that some of that may be buffered on there, then.
Or in a chase or something, if they don't have dash cams or...
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, so... It could be. I know the, I think the next, the Body Cam 3 is in development and actually being deployed. That would be our next upgrade that we could have in a year or two. That may have some triggers put into that also, that is talking to the vehicle, that if it goes over a certain speed, or the lights are turned on, sirens turned on, that it can trigger that. So we'll be looking at that as an option.
Okay. With that two or two away.
Yeah.
I mean, I, still, if we have the capability of those two, why wouldn't we record the maximum that we could?
What was your number on the, or a minute and a half or something like that? I mean, I think you can go back with the buffering of a minute and a half, actually, can you?
With, yeah, with where we have our resolution set, it goes back a minute, up to a minute and a half.
Up to a minute and a half. He's at 30 seconds right now.
Yeah.
The argument is, is that I think we should go with full minute and a half if we have it, unless somebody can explain why that isn't, the more information, the better.
Well, I would agree that bringing to a minute would be more...
Well, again, the only thing that I have is to be able to weigh out what we're actually gaining with that minute and a half.
Right.
And for most of the officers that were on their chest, were not having a good view of outside the dash or through the window. So it's not really getting any information from driving behaviors or any other driving issues.
Sure.
It is, it's recording what's happening on the radio, and what, maybe what happens with the officer commenting, or if the officer is talking to another officer on the radio while they're responding. All of that information is already recorded by dispatch for that radio traffic. The only thing that would be incidental to that would be any comment that an officer's making.
Right. Well, but, and I follow your reasoning with, you know, depending on the body type and the way the person sits in the car, it might not catch everything, but it might actually catch some things, too. It may be used for training, it could be used for, you know, because again, I don't want to beat the horse to death, but I mean, the complaints that I've had is that people feel like they're being profiled and pulled over for, because they're out at 11 o'clock at night on Friday night, and it's easier for an officer to make something up. And I'm not saying it's all of them, I'm not saying it's any of them. I'll take it with a grain of salt. I'd like to know, because personally, when people come back to me, I'd love to say, hey, if you think that's the case, go view with your tape called Chief Guards, and go view it, if you think that's the case. And I just think it'd be great for training purposes, and maybe we just start out that way. And, you know, maybe three months or six months from now, you can come back and say, you know what, Sean, we're just getting a lot of garbage, it's eating up a lot of space. I don't know, there could be a million reasons to go back to 30, or we haven't had anybody that's been able to even use that to come back and show me that it was wrong. But it might show if officers are profiling or getting aggressive with, you know, individual, you know, young females and everything else. We've had letters like that, we've had instances where they're riding the bumper of the car, trying to bluster them, and it's not just your police officers. I mean, I've had Scott County do it to myself a number of years ago, but I'm just saying it can happen, and, you know, I'm in full support of police officers doing their job, trust me. Like I said before, even I've talked, I have plenty of friends that ended up at high school that going back to high school that are still police officers. But I just think the more information, the better. And if we have that capability, I mean, at least when we're starting out, again, six months from now, maybe we come back and just say, you know... months from now, maybe we come back and just say, you know what, Sean, this hasn't, I've had no complaints, I've had none of this, I've had, I think we should go with thirty seconds. And I'd be willing to look at that. But I mean, if we're going and we have the capability, I just don't know why we wouldn't take full advantage of all the information we could get.
But isn't it when they turn their camera on?
Well, it buffers, it's always recording.
When the camera's on, it's buffering, yes. It's always recording.
Do they have that thing on twenty fours?
Well, no. Well, they're, by policy, they're directed when they leave the station, they turn it on.
Okay.
But when they hit start then, it can go back that determined time and pull that in.
It's always going back.
And audio.
As soon as they hit it, it'll go back a minute and a half and it'll save all that information.
But I think what you're trying to get to is if someone's falling, someone, the cops falling, someone's close, well, if he doesn't turn it on.
No, but he would.
It won't, you know what I'm saying?
No, it will go back a minute and a half. And you would be able to see that if.
Right, but I'm just saying.
The minute he pulls that squad over and he gets out of the car and hits that.
A little minute back, but he may have been, he may not turn it on, you know, they know the timing of it.
Absolutely, that could be very well true.
I'm just saying, you're just trying to find a, a, a use of the equipment to negate some of these questions.
The full use of the equipment.
Right.
To give the citizens an opportunity to review what actually happened. I, it's not that I trust everybody that's come up to me with complaints saying that, you know, that this is what the police officer did. I, I'll take it all with a grain of salt, because I know what police officers have to go through. But it is another way of, I mean, I've had enough situations of this profiling or harassment and I've heard all kinds of adjectives for it, but that, uh, um, this would be a way that they could come in and say, and I'm sure a great percentage of them would, Jim could say, well, right here, you know, you crossed the fog line, or you didn't blink a hundred and twenty-five feet before the turn, or you rolled through the stop sign. Or in Tim Athlin, Sergeant Athlin's demo at the last meeting, you could clearly see the guy, they pulled him over for not having his lights on, and as he's walking up to the camera, you could see the driver of the car turn his lights on. That just bolstered their case right there. He can't come back, he can't come to me at the next graduation party I'm at saying, I got pulled over, I had my lights on, and, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But I, I, I just think if the, if the ability to have more, the more information is there, it just makes sense to me to utilize that, at least in the initial phases. And like I said, you might come back to us a year from now or six months from now and say, you know what, I got all this extra stuff, it's not, I've had one case or I've had.
Well, and if it, if it adds a, a minute to every recording we have, yeah, that, that will put more data that we're, we are storing and paying for.
Well, plus, once you take that tape into evidence, you have to white out more, or there's more chance of, I mean, to do something with that, that, you want you, because you have.
Well, I mean, generally, if, if the officer is driving, it's going to be, again, pointing to the dash or, or under the steering wheel and out onto the dash. We're not getting a good direct view out.
No, but I'm, maybe example of an officer walking down the street during Dozenki, taps it, and then you've got a minute and a half of three thousand people's faces on that piece of evidence. And you get, you've got it, that evidence is that whole piece, it's not.
Yep, it's the entire.
Cuffed them, it's the whole thing.
Yeah.
So then you've got that redacting and plus all that issue.
That would, yeah, that would cause an issue.
The steering wheel for a minute and a half, there's not much.
Yeah.
To deal with there, but.
So, and, and that would take action from the council. You could just, uh, add a minute, right? And then if it looks like it's just bogus, uh, delete that from the, uh, policy and put it back at thirty minutes. So you're almost making, um, the argument for dash cams. So I don't know, you know?
Dash cams would be a great addition to our police department.
I agree.
Because they do, they do the same thing, just with the squad. And the reason we went to body cams was because we are going to get more, more video with contact with people. But a dash cam serves its purpose also. And back in mid eighties, we had dash cams. They were small, compact cam quarters that were mounted on our dash, and that's what we used. But, but yeah, we're, we're able to record driving behaviors and, and following vehicles and when they drifted over the lines, absolutely.
So that, and that would cue your, 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 your concerns, you know?
Well, I, I think, again, the more information that we can get, the better. I'm not saying that we still shouldn't go use the full capability of the equipment. Obviously, the LAPD folks on the.
But.
Well, I can tell you, we do not respond to calls the same way that LAPD. Right, I know. It's not a perfect comparison, however. Get, uh, maybe I'm wrong now too, but I thought that even dash cams, you'll set the tape at so far.
They have a, the same buffering, absolutely.
And I've heard, and I've heard that dash cam doesn't even go on until the lights go on. So it rarely really gets the reason for being pulled over. Is that true?
Uh, well, the, with Axon, they have the same ability as the body cam built into it, that you can go back and, and get more footage, you know, thirty seconds. And, and in that case, in that case, I would agree with you, Sean, that if, if we have a, a squad cam, that, then it may, it may be beneficial to have that look back a little further then, uh, because you are getting that driving conduct. At the same time, officers are aware what their job is and why they're out there. And when something catches their eye, um, that draws their attention to a vehicle, um, and once they have their attention on that vehicle, and then they're watching for driving behaviors or violations, uh, equipment violations, at that time, more than likely, when they see a violation, they would turn on their cam at that time. But at the same time, it would, it would still have that going back to the buffering determination. But yeah, it, it would be my recommendation that we stay at thirty for now. I can, I can look at it and, and assess it in a couple months or a few months and determine whether or not we are getting anything that's beneficial from that. But, but I, I don't think we're going to get any evidentiary value from going back to the minute and a half right now, just by their placement. I know Friday night, when I went home, on my way home, I had my body cam with me and I was placing it different places on my dash while I was going. And it does provide a good view, and I was going to look at some sort of cradle that we could have for it on our dash. Which would be a multi-purpose for the body cam. The only, the only hesitation there is, uh, when an officer is working to stop a vehicle, I don't want them distracted by having to necessarily grab their cam and push it up when they're supposed to be focused on safety and making an approach to the vehicle.
Absolutely.
Um, but, but it would be something that while I did that, I got home and I, I looked at it with Axon D U on my work phone and looked at them. It, it does do a good job at getting out and, and seeing what's in front of you anyways. That being said, I was going to, again, entertain having a cradle made or get something made and have an officer utilize it that way to see how it functions and what goes on with it.
Well, thank you for doing that, though.
Yeah.
Active, I agree that, you know?
If you get a passion out of it, we all get.
So what you're saying is that we start out with a thirty-second camera, that you'll evaluate it over a few months, and maybe in ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, you can come back to us and say, hey, I've reviewed this and we actually do get, you know, pictures through the steering wheel or through the.
Yeah, the next, next few months, I can look at.
And we can discuss it again.
And at once or not, okay?
Absolutely. I think that's more than fair, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just that I didn't mean to harass you there, Sean, when you're doing that. I'm taking your conversation very seriously. And I appreciate you doing that too. And, um, it would be nice to be able to take a look back later on and let's start determining whether we, um, may need, uh, dash cams. If, if, if the problem that you say exists was people thinking that they're getting pulled over, um, for various reasons like that, uh, then yeah, we could, we could look at getting something like that too. We don't want people to think that, um, you know, this police force, it's really not out there to get anybody and to nail the residents. If you didn't break the law, the police wouldn't be pulled over.
Well, and that's very true, but I, and I would like to think that, but I also think that there's, sometimes they could possibly be bored, there's, and I look at it, maybe even the savings, maybe we don't have three officers on on a Thursday night, maybe it's only two, maybe we try to utilize our, our county deputies on either side, those sort of as backup and, and, and if they really need additional support. But I, what I'm saying is that, um, I think more people feel harassed coming out at eleven o'clock on a Friday night, pulling out of the bowling alley or whatever, than, and they're getting pulled over for not signaling a hundred and twenty-five feet before a turn, let's use that as an example, than they are at eleven o'clock in the morning on that same Friday. Because obviously, and I know what they're looking for, but I mean, the fact is, is that you, and I'm all for that, I'm not asking for free passes to anybody. I mean, my wife and daughter drive on those streets, I want them safe for everybody. But I, you know, either we're going to out-profile it and just say, oh, the guy pulled out of Fish Tail Grill or Carboni's and it's eleven thirty, so he must be drunk. Well, there's plenty of people that know that that isn't the case, you know? They got done with the dancer side about ten o'clock and ran up there to get chicken wings, you know? So I mean, but those are the type of complaints that I get and, literally, it's the number one complaint, Jim and I have talked about it. I just would like, I think it could be a great training tool, I think it gives some accountability to the police officers. And certainly, there's a, a safety issue for everybody else involved too, so that's all I'm saying, but I think we've gone over this thing.
Yeah.
As we make this first move in the technology of this nature, that as Rick had already highlighted, is that if for some reason, as we watch this and take a look at how this unfolds over the course of this next year, uh, still in our back pocket, if there's a belief and a feeling that any of that still exists or is occurring, uh, then we can take a look at squad cams and be able to go another step further in the process of bringing the technology into our PD operations. So we start with this and see where this goes and how it looks, and maybe we'll figure out later.
Even on our trial basis, I'd have used, used our video to exonerate officers already from my complaints.
Okay, great, and that's great. And I'm sure, again, I'm sure a lot of the stories I get are.
Are stories.
Are stories or sore feelings or whatever else.
But you also probably don't get those ones that come back and say that, uh, the officer was exonerated and that they were at fault.
Right.
Process. Those don't come back to you.
No, but that's why I'd love to get those back, you know?
But I think the, the problem in that is that the information under each of these is private, as I understand. Unless something triggers it to become public, it's available to the individual that's involved, but would not become generally available for public review.
And that's excluding, uh, things that are pretty hip, uh, youth, and you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I get that, but at least I have the help to say, well, call Chief Guards and have them give you the tape. And if I don't hear anything back, then I probably can determine that, yeah, you know what, after you saw it, you were guilty, so. And I'd love to be able to say that, you know, squash some of that.
All right. Well, good job on that.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have homework. Councilman Dave Brusick, who serves on our Cedar Lake Area Water and Sanitary District. And, uh, and in the packet, he kind of gave you a little summation of what's been going on, but I thought it would be nice to have him visit us again.
Hey, Dave.
And kind of give us an update of, of what's going on with the, uh, Cedar Lake Water, Area Water and Sanitary District. Just so you know, Councilman, our former councilmember Brusick was given the opportunity, knowing the length of the agenda is that it was offered that he could come in January, but he chose to want to come tonight, even kind of knowing where we had on place on agendas, so. I think he just misses us, so he wanted to come here and do that.
Yeah, I think Kim and Kitty are going to be in Florida in January.
I wish. No, we may be in Michigan. I know we're going to be. You guys had it all too easy tonight. You know that quick trip thing, could have gone really wild on you, and it wasn't that bad. So I'll try and hold my presentation to thirty minutes.
They appear you had it done for three and a half minutes, set it on an executive summary?
All right, Dave, time's up, but thank you for coming. You're welcome, Rick. Okay, so, my notes. I do have a correction to the notes, but I suspect Bruce already knows what the problem is on point number five.
Yeah, I do notice that.
Yeah. Um, I have to say one thing before I start this. Uh, you guys are awful slow in approving or motioning and seconding. At these district meetings, as soon as the subject is done, Tom Luth is up there, I make a motion, and right behind him is either Jim Holden or, uh, Jim Eckelmann. I second him. I don't want to make a motion, I don't got a chance. It's done. All right. Most of the meetings are pretty routine. Most of it is Quality Flow Systems, giving their bi-monthly report as to just what kind of problems they have with their equipment, or the equipment down the district. It's usually what takes up most of the meetings, and it's really informative to someone who doesn't know a hell of a lot about the, the system, uh, because you get to learn about how this whole thing works. But anyway, um, Quality Flow Systems is the company that, uh, works out here in the industrial park. Uh, they handle all of the maintenance, repair for the district, uh, their pumps, um, transport system, et cetera. And they found quite some time ago that the, um, the, uh, pumps that were in the houses were failing a lot. They've been in there now nineteen years, and some of those were failing already five years ago. So they're hitting their lifetime. So what they did three years ago, they made a recommendation to the district, let's start replacing these. I'm going to get Barnes pumps. E ones were the original ones, there were a lot of plastic parts in there that just didn't hold up. The Barnes is a more professional type of pump, automatic parts, they can handle a lot more stuff. You can go to the step down there and get them plugged up, but they're not as tender, if you will, uh, as the E ones were. So what the, uh, district now is doing, every year, they're replacing, putting in buying thirty, uh, more Barnes pumps so that they can replace them, um, probably within thirty, uh, I don't know, what, ten years? They should have them all replaced. The next one is, oh, yeah, their legal provider, they use Hoffman and, um, Larkin, or Larkin and Hoffman, I should say. Because they were looking for, uh, a company that would give them better technical service as well as legal service, and they couldn't get one. So even Mike tried, couldn't find a company that they could go to. So after not finding anybody, they stayed with Larkin and Hoffman. Larkin, and they tried to get a report from Larkin and Hoffman, Hoffman and Larkin, uh, for almost a year now, as to have them look over their contract that they have with the city, and they just weren't getting it place. They, Art wanted them to call them, oh, we can't find anything before, you never sent it to us. Well, the hell they didn't, I know I was there, I could see that, Art sent out a question to them. And finally, one day about two months ago, one of the employees there says, oh yeah, here's the report, I found it someplace. And it was that they couldn't come up with anything that the district could see that they might want to change in the contract. So what they decided was, we're going to leave the contract as is unless the city re- pushes us to change it. So as of now. So, as of now, they're not interested in changing the contract. Oh, yeah, think about isolation valves. There, when they first put this system in, the engineers had designed putting in isolation valves so they could shut off various parts of the system, so that if there was a failure someplace, they could turn a valve, and that would isolate those, any number of them, or whatever it is, to not having any contact with the other parts of the system, and thereby they'd be able to fix it. But I know Mark Deutsch, on Art's request, went out looking for one. He tore up, I think, half the front yard of that particular property, never found it. He was told it should be at that point because of the drawing net they thought they had, and it wasn't. And he went down deep. But anyway, lo and behold, Bolton and Beck had a copy of it. So, but they weren't quite sure whether or not that dot on the map corresponded to some point on the property. Well, what they also had was they had a digital recording of the GPS of where every one of those valves were, but Bolton and Beck couldn't find them, until Art got after them long enough, and I think he even talked to Glenn about using the city's GPS marker to find them. Well, I saw the list last Wednesday, that was our last meeting, and it was an eight-and-a-half by eleven sheet of paper, single-spaced, both sides. There must have been fifty valves on each side of those, of that piece of paper, showing where, somewhere between eighty and a hundred of those valves were. So, now, Art finally has all the information that he needs to be able to go to that map and with their cell phone, if it's equipped with that capability, go out and find those valves within, say, six inches. So, what they did was, I didn't know this until the other night, but they now have had GM Contract in construction go out last fall, and they went out, looked at every one of those valves, took, just give me a pipe down there, turn the valve, so that they know that it will open and close. Tell them if there's something broken in it, it's just that the valve doesn't move. So, that's been taken care of. There remains one homeowner that is not hooked up to the system yet. He's still on a septic system. He was supposed to have hooked up in 2017 by barbarious reasons that are, were formed to him, that it was too wet, they couldn't get down, they had to get in there and clean it up. And Mark Deutsch was supposed to do it, but Mark Deutsch was having a lot of trouble getting help, like so many people just can't find workers. So, Mark had to let a lot of things go. Well, so, this homeowner went out, found his own, but the estimate came back to like thirty-six thousand dollars to hook up his new system, get rid of the old septic sewer system, and it's about over. So, Mark Deutsch came back and says, you know, I'll do it, I'm going to do it Wednesday.
You've spoken too long.
My thirty minutes aren't up yet, Mike.
It wasn't thirty minutes to start.
So, anyway, Mark is going to go out this Wednesday, two days from now, he says, weather is going to be above thirty, I'm going to go out there and dig up that old septic system and hook you up with a new system. Well, this is quite a feat, because this owner was at the meeting Wednesday night, he says, if I dig down that far, just over a foot, I am going to hit water. When they put the septic system in, you think that he had two one-thousand-dollar, one-thousand-gallon tanks in there, they floated. They had to physically, I think, somehow put equipment in there so they could sink that stuff and hook it all up, cover it up, and then get whatever out. So, it should be done by the end of this week. The fifth one, PFA loan, has not been paid off yet. There is an error here, I found out Wednesday, that there are two payments left, one in February, one in March, no, I'm sorry, February and August of 2020. Then their PFA loan will be finished, and in January of 2021, they will start making payments on the principal and the interest on the loan they have from the suit with the city. And last, well, two to say, I left the last thing. Scott County informed the district that in 2020, they are, twenty-one, they are going to put a roundabout on County Road Two and Fifteen. Apparently, there have been quite a few accidents there, and so they want to put another roundabout in this community, close this community, and it's going to solve that. Problem is, some of our lines going to the waste treatment plant run through that intersection. So, it's going to cost us, I think, thirty-four thousand, or about thirty-nine thousand to move our lines. That's the estimate from Bolton and Beck. Five thousand dollars for the preliminary work and thirty-four thousand dollars for the, uh, materials. And lastly, I think it's been a wonderful idea that with the city's help, the district now has seven directors. Two from the county, last year was Tom Wolf and Barb...
Bracken White.
Yeah. And now, it's Tom Wolf and Kate Sedlatchek. Kate has been great because she is the supervisor of the Scott County Environmental Services Department. She's the person that goes out and tells the people that we need to look at the properties out there, because they make the determination of where is the property relative to bonded monitors. They have the ability to go into a property and see if it's following code, and for a long time, they just didn't feel like doing anything for the district. So, Kate says, that's your job. The district is part of Scott County, you will go out there and do it. We had one problem with some property out there two months ago. Kate heard about it at the last meeting, they got it solved. So, I'm glad to see they're there. Otherwise, working with them is, actually, it's kind of fun. They meet bi-monthly. Next year, except for April, it will be the second Wednesday of every other month. April, however, is special for them, for CSSW, and then they have a lot of text statements to get out, so they're making it April twenty-ninth for that meeting, and that'll be posted probably in the next paper.
Do you have a meeting at CSSW?
It's at CSSW, yeah, you guys, it's open to the public, so you guys are welcome anytime.
Okay.
Any questions?
Well, what would it take to kind of push them towards reviewing the contract?
Probably a request from the mayor or the city administrator.
What's the issue, what caused them to be motivated to start that thought process? Or was there something I'm missing here?
Well, Scott could probably explain the...
I understand the issue with the... I was involved in all that part of it, but why is the contract, why were they motivated to look at that? Or why are we wanting to look at it?
It's pretty outdated. It's not relatively close at all to any of the more recent versions that have come in the last ten years of a number of communities around here. We did, from the city's perspective, during this process and before the lawsuit really went anywhere, did provide them with a copy of two or three other cities' versions that I've used elsewhere, and they didn't, their attorneys at the time didn't like that, they didn't want to go through a whole process of doing a new agreement. The newer agreements are much more consistent with what's required by the state as to, almost like a civic and industrial user tape agreement that you generally have, which is in essence what they're like to the city. And honestly, some of the things that we found during, there weren't issues for the lawsuit itself, but if you looked at in the agreement, the standards, things like that are just outdated, they're not right.
Would there be an effort for them to look at the contract?
Yeah, that was the suggestion of the city before, is to get a new contract in place.
Does the contract provide for us to terminate the contract?
Uh, no, it doesn't.
So, we can't do it?
Once they get over a hundred thousand, no.
So, we can't?
We can do it.
It really didn't have a...
We can't affect a change, is really what it says, we can determine what their reality is.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't affect a change, it has to be done, yeah, correct.
Until, if they reach a certain level, isn't there a built-in backdoor there, that if they go over, as development goes out that way, if they go over a hundred thousand gallons per...
There are limitations on the number of connections that can remain to our system.
But that would ultimately force the renegotiation, right? And we don't...
Well, that's what I thought.
Well, they couldn't connect.
Oh, they couldn't connect.
No, they're not allowed.
Yeah.
See, any other connections, they have to go through Scott County and the legislature to get that three-hundred-twenty-five number raised. They did that with Silver Maple Acres, they got another thirty-nine pieces of property out there into the system, it's working now. Mark Deutsch is putting some in on the southwest section, so Mark wants to hook up to it too. But we explained to Mark that you have to go through these steps to be able to get authorization through the state, Scott County, to come and hook up to the system. It's not going to hurt our waste treatment plant, they can handle it, but it would be a big advantage to, I think, the property owners out there if they do it.
But procedurally, it requires the council to approve it, the board to approve it, and then to go in and get legislative authority to be able to do that. That answers Sean's question, yes, there are limitations on the numbers unless we go through that process.
Okay. And that wouldn't necessarily change the contract. Contract has other issues, and it's just, as they said, as Scott said, and Mike said, it's outdated. Problem was, when we showed it to, by the direction of one of the council members, Mike got put in, put some pretty stiff penalties in there. If you, if you go over this, you are getting penalized by X number of dollars or whatever. And that just ticked one of the directors off. He used a lot of colorful language that I've never heard before. It was unexpected, but in retrospect, kind of like...
Well, I think that's something we might, you know, not hot on the agenda, but eventually, I think we should keep pursuing that, so. Next time we meet with Barb Bracken, Mike will kind of put a bug in her, even though she doesn't sit on here.
We're also watching, we haven't gone off to Cedar Lake as of yet, but there's a fair amount of work that Glenn and I are closely monitoring with what's going on with MESSURB and the state of Minnesota as it relates to various environmental issues that are being examined in the wastewater treatment arena. And so, we haven't gone to Cedar Lake as of yet, because we don't have anything generally specific enough to alert them, and I don't want to get them all excited for no reason and we take a look at it. But depending upon what the state does when they come down with our new wastewater treatment plant license, it could have some bearings that we're going to have to have conversations with Cedar Lake. Glenn, what specifically that...
Well, the big issue is the chlorides in the water. That's a, that's a big push right now with the PCA. It's coming from a lot of different sources, one of them is water softeners, which basically means you're going to be putting in lime softening, which is the most cost-effective in the drinking water side, so that you can get rid of water softeners, but to the tune of millions of dollars. And so, the argument right now with PCA is, who's paying for all this? Oh, can you just drop this on somebody? Rote salt's a big contributor, fertilizer chemicals used by the agriculture industry's a huge contributor to the chlorides in the water. One of the last meetings I was at, that the PCA was at, it was asked numerous times, what are we doing about rote salt, what are we doing about chemicals, fertilizer, things like that? And the roundabout answer was, well, you guys are the easy targets, we're starting with you. So, there's a lot that could happen and change. This agreement that you're talking about with Cedar Lake, the big push for getting a new agreement is not saying that anybody would knowingly do this. I'm convinced it wouldn't happen knowingly, but all of a sudden, somebody decides to build a little paint shop in his garage, and it starts going down the sanitary sewer, comes to our wastewater plant, and all of a sudden, we're in violation, costs us thousands and thousands of dollars. We got to have something in an agreement saying, we know where it came from, so you're paying that thousands and thousands of dollars, we're not. So, fix the problem. That's the bigger deal with these agreements, is you got to have some kind of a way to monitor, to track, to hold somebody responsible for doing major damage, not so much damage, physical damage, but financial damage to the city because of violations, because we couldn't meet our regulations.
Is there an indemnification clause in the agreement?
It's nowhere near what we should have based on your agreement, let's put it that way. Mike was pointing out, is we don't have a, the teeth weren't there, that's not in the agreement, it's drafted at that point in time, to say, if you're the source point, you're going to be responsible, not the rest of the taxpayers' court or the ratepayers who are up there. So, it lacks an...
We have a similar agreement with Chart that Scott Riggs' office reviewed, and they agreed upon, I'm going to say this was probably three years ago, we just updated it. Basically, requires them to do some monitoring, to watch what's coming towards us, and take some responsible for what, sorry, responsibility for what you're sending down the drain.
Well, I think I understood you intended to forewarn, in case there's improvements, that they are going to be subject to having to pay the burden, which is, I think, part of the agreement, was part of the motivation of the lawsuit originally.
Well, that's what the lawsuit established.
So, if we're aware that there may be something, it's always good to have that conversation at that meeting.
I don't have anything that I can hand and say this is what's coming.
There isn't, but just to remind, because they don't come to the wastewater treatment plant every day, they're not up to speed on what's coming out. No, about all you can do is watch the discussion that's going on in the newspaper about what's happening with MPCA and what they're doing to watch about what's happening in the Minnesota River system, that our outflow goes out northwest of town in that area. Just watching that discussion, Mankato's taking an active role and a lead on behalf of a number of the cities in this part of the state, trying to take a look at, you know, what is happening specifically with point source impacts from cities versus that which is coming from farming. And so, as you just heard Glenn say, is that the difficulties that they're pinning on where some of these challenges and issues are coming from, is that because they license and regulate us more than they do the farming community and making them tally up in that process, is that we're on the horizon, and so we're just watching what's going on in that area. And yes, if and when I see something that materially would be of interest, I would certainly let Cedar Lake know that that's coming. But the only message I guess I'm trying to say is that they need to kind of be watching and seeing what's going on in this whole wastewater arena issue by MPCA, but I don't have any specific... Excluding... Excluding what you... Excluding, excluding what you're just talking about, there is many things in our capital plans in the next two or three years that we should keep them apprised of and being the improvements that would be reimbursable.
No.
No.
Okay.
District Board is now very different than it was when we went through this lawsuit. The people on there now are much more, especially ones from Scott County, are much more up on what's happening with the MPCA, what their rules they have to follow, so that they know, I think in the back of their minds, that the city is someday going to want to upgrade the contract.
Well, thank you, David. Now, the other question is, are you still willing to serve as our representative?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Does he usually make those recommendations in January? But I'm glad you're here.
As long as, it's okay with them. They says, yes. They don't have to pay you to upgrade the website. But if you leave, then we gotta pay somebody to do it, so.
You guys think about it. Keep it bottom line. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
David. Next on the agenda, before our previous budget workshop, we had two interviews regarding the appointment of a replacement for Park Board. And after those interviews and discussion with the three other council members that were during the interview process, I'm going to recommend, the recommendation that Joe Barton be added to the Park Board. We had two great candidates, and I know Coco was one of the candidates, and I hope that not being chosen at this time does not deter her from looking at the ads that are coming out this April and that for replacement of other positions with the boards.
An honor to be in the planning commission. Start going to the planning commission immediately. You know all about it.
So, that's my recommendation. I just need a motion from council. Motion by Rick Styler.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Okay. Next consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, items, issues, anything in the consent package?
Do you move that being approved with consent agenda?
Motion by Sean Ryan. I will second that. So, if there's no other comments, anything in the consent agenda? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Okay, second agenda is paid. So, in that, I mentioned that in the consent agenda, we do have the mayor appointments, the boards and commissions that we were doing in January. I guess the only question is if there's something that, any changes that you made, if someone wants to serve on something else, let me know, and so, we can kind of make those appointments. We usually do that in January. So, that was kind of the little extra package here. That was what we are equally assuming. If anyone on the council wants to. Ah, miscellaneous. Mitch? Good. David, anything else? Patrick?
I'm fine.
Hey, Jim?
Nothing.
Bruce?
Thanks for your understanding in regards to the EDA the other morning when we had our outage here and kind of got worked through that, but nonetheless, you're.
Well, that's fine. I know, obviously, the Miller Milling, obviously, is going to kind of put a little damper on your electric sales. Are you looking at maybe redoing the budget, or are you just going to see how it shakes?
I think we're gonna, I got some things to discuss with the commission on a week from this coming Monday, just kind of some of the impacts that it could have. We're still a nimble a little bit in regards to their operations. They're going to keep things kind of going there in regards to needing electricity and so, through June, I'm told, to move grain and so out of the facility. So, I'm, I don't have specifics yet of how, of the total impact, so work through that with the commission a little bit. And if we need to amend the budget as the year goes on, we'll do so.
Okay.
It won't impact.
Have you, are you gonna, did you meet with Miller Milling?
I did.
Yes. And how'd that go?
As good as those kind of meetings go.
Easy. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Glenn?
Oh, we got a few comments back from central office on the Main Street plant, so that's good. We know they're looking at them. Nothing major. All kind of minor at this point, so hopefully, that's going to be the case going forward, and hopefully, we see if there's any more comments in the very near future.
How will the proffer business not doing gas anymore, would they cut that entrance off then?
That has not been brought up in any conversation that I've had with anybody, so I don't have a good answer for you on that.
Yeah, I don't know if Kevin would go for that, you know, being that most people use that as a parking lot for the post office or anything. He probably would, since they're not serving gas, that maybe would.
That hasn't, that hasn't come up at all.
Okay.
So, I don't have a good answer for it.
Okay.
It wouldn't change the design at all?
No, no, it just would be, it'd just be a straight gutter rather than an entrance into the gas station.
Don't know.
Okay. Something else?
Nothing.
Cam?
Nope, nothing more.
Michael? Scott?
No, not here.
Nice seeing you again, sir. Barb?
No.
Okay. Rick?
Just one thing. I'm glad to see that the utilities got their situation taken care of. Thank the guys for being out there on the cold, and you guys do a great job, so I just, that's good.
Okay, Bruce?
Taking advantage of Scott being here, just to ask a question. I see we have the Charter Commission minutes, and just to ask the question of the relationship between the council and the Charter Commission. In the minutes, it's referring to some work being done and some changes potentially to the charter. Where is the statute? How does that statutory work? Who, who can initiate a change to the charter?
The council can, and so can the Charter Commission. They're the two primary factors. So can citizens if they want a petition for something.
Okay.
How we've done, when the commission was reconstituted and work alongside the council and we've done the commission, which is, I think, a very good thing. We've done adoption by ordinance, which is a unique way of doing it, where it has been done unanimously by five, once it's been by Charter Commission. We did update the charter all the way through, all chapters, once it came back into being again. I know there's just a couple of topics that were discussed at meetings a week ago, I guess it was, and that's, there's going to be discussed for the first quarter of the year. And we have some recommended language that will eventually come for discussion. Typically, what's been done is the Charter Commission has looked at it, or based on discussions of the council, looked at something, and then both bodies have looked, and there's no reason to go forward with the amendment process by ordinance. The council's not going to fully agree with it, so it's been a very, you know, intent and process.
Okay. I'm just not sure if they're being done by petition or ordinance.
No, I, I mean, we have not had any, in any recent time, in fact, for the last 25 years, it has been done by petition or anything. Only recent changes have been done by ordinance for the council's adopt them after a recommendation from the Charter Commission.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Hey? John?
Yeah, I just have a quick, quick things. I had talked to a construction guy here in town, and he was approached for fencing to go in around the mill, about installing it. Is that, would they need city approval for that? I think, you know, there can't be anything that would look worse than.
Yeah, so I got a, not a permit in, but I got some paperwork from probably the same individual, maybe it was somebody different, but they want to do a six-foot-tall galvanized chain link fence around that, perimeter of the lot, not right up against the sidewalk or anything, but closer into the building. That would be just permitted by our industrial zoning district, zoning ordinance at this point.
Okay, but it wouldn't be out on the curb and?
No. Nope, they have like a job site trailer they want to put out there, and this would fence that in and then a portion of the building. A lot of the gravel area kind of out from Second Avenue, when the highway would not be fenced in.
Okay. And there's, that would come before the planning commission, or is there any?
Nope. Nope.
Because it's an industrial area, they can do that?
Industrially zoned, and we allow six-foot-tall fencing right up to the property line, actually.
Okay. Have we heard, is there any plan for that area? I mean, even if, could the city potentially even buy some of that frontage, put some trees up or something to block that? Is it, if it sits there and deteriorates too long? I mean, let alone a chain link fence or?
Haven't had those discussions.
Okay. Is that something we should be looking at though, or? I mean, with the 2020 project coming anyways, I don't know if there's some ability, a bumper zone there along the?
We had things in process with Miller Milling. I guess, I don't know how that disfixes that.
There's a plan for decorative fencing, but no trees.
Okay.
Decorative fencing and shrubs probably, but nothing that's going to block the area. I don't want, I don't know what the options are, but I can just, you know, you can imagine what a six-foot-high chain link fence. There's not like razor wire over there.
No, we won't allow that.
I, I was worried more about their insurance company trying to get the people out of there, but.
Yep.
Okay, and then just piggybacking on that a little bit, has the EDA discussed that? Any of your guys' meetings on trying to sell that, or, you know, try to facilitate a sale? Maybe there's some other people.
General discussion about it. Just so knew, it's.
Sure, and I realize that. I was just kind of curious because.
In the future, I think, I think maybe Mike can run up, if we can initiate a meeting with the people in Bloomington eventually to have, if they're so willing to do it. And I don't know if this fence thing would give us an opportunity to find a point person or a contact person to establish a relationship with, but as long as it won't follow the rules, that's what you can do. But my risk, my worry would be is that they just do nothing. They don't market it, they don't sell it, they just maintain it as is. Right? And don't do anything, because there's no motivation really probably to spend the money to take it down or to.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if there's other co-ops we could reach out to that might be interested in taking something like that over, or, you know, I don't know. I just.
I raised an inquiry with them the day that they informed me of what was occurring, and I think that was a week ago, last Wednesday, when that was done. And I asked about the property, and they said at this point that they've not made any determinations necessarily right now what's going to be done with it. Their first concern is obviously, the night before, they had just met with the employees, so their first intent right now is to try to facilitate work with the employees. We made contact on behalf of the EDA, reached out through the First Stop Shop up in Scott County CDA to make contact with the Department of Employment, Economic Development, that here in Minnesota law that those entities with 50 or more employees, when they go through a layup and a closure like this, are required to do certain things. This is smaller because I think it only affected 41 or 42 employees, so they didn't have to comply with those requirements. But the person that handles it, the MP, is that we put him in touch with the company and their HR to try to assist all that they can from the state's perspective, from either information about other jobs or job retraining or anything of that nature through D, and also working with First Stop Shop, made contact with the workforce center up in Shakopee to try to make sure that we can leave that available to the plant manager so that information can be passed on or available to those employees that was in employment. The HR department up in Bloomington with Miller Milling to try to at least make them aware of that to help in that transition. So, I don't expect right now that they're going to respond or give us any, any, any time of day, so to speak, with what they're going to do with the building. The employees are the first priority for this initial transition.
Sure. I, I realize.
But I do have contact with the Director of Operations, and that as we get through this, obviously, this is going to be a difficult month for many of them. The way is to be able to look at that on behalf of EDA and to try to find out what are their specific plans? Where are they going to go? You know, and they told me that the reasoning and rationale that, you know, there is excess capacity in the milling industry nationwide, that there was an implant built by ABM just outside of Chicago, to the west of Chicago, that is probably the more, one of the more up-to-date technology mills that exist out there. And then you take a look at the age and condition of our facility, and what's going on in the marketplace, as they indicated, if they're plant basically uncompetitive in that sense. And so, I'm sure in arriving at that conclusion, we're notifying those employees just a week ago, last Tuesday, that they probably have a few other things on their mind right now as they provide and take a look at what they're doing. If they're doing any good thing, any good business will do is to try to protect if you're not going to have, they're going to have a couple of people supposedly who are going to be left as caretakers of the property, but is trying to secure the property so that you don't have individuals deciding to try to enter into the plant, breaking windows, you know, getting in, and that we've got public safety issues to contend with. And so, anything from the normal weeds and nuisances and those kind of things, we'll be able to monitor and handle like we would any other property, and as time goes on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, is there a way that we can keep a close look on that? Because we don't want a vacant building sitting there filling up with rodents and such, and I, I just, I would like it if everybody in this room would keep a close eye on that and for the attorney, start looking for windows that we could use to force them to do something with it if they choose to let it dilapidate.
Like I was just describing, is that if we find that nuisances start existing or that come to our attention, then we can deal with those as we do in any other property situation. So, we don't have to take any greater effort than what we typically do, but yes, I think for public safety or public works, as we take a look at that, you know, whether that be just exactly what you're referring to, or whether it's tall glat, tall grass or weeds or, you know, just whatever it might be, is that we would handle that under the police ordinance at this point. We can't force them to, to do anything with the building. Bruce, was it you that said, or somebody said that, I'm sure they're going to be trying to board up windows and doors and other things to try to keep, you know, individuals out of there, and that's probably the biggest thing from their standpoint. Try to manage, risk management is, how do they keep people out from getting into areas that they shouldn't belong?
It'd probably be nice if our police department had a conversation with them to, so they knew what, what activities should they expect to see and not to see, so, you know, if they see this happening, that's not normal or something in a vacant property like that.
I know one of our officers already had a conversation with them, and they indicated they were going to reach out to our department with contact information and some of the.
Which lights are going to be on, which aren't?
Yeah. Information. My understanding, they're going to have two people that are caretakers for the property. I don't know if that's full-time or what percentage of time that is, but that was their plan right now. But I could follow up with it, also Bruce.
But I think, Ken, from the perspective of that property sits vacant for one year from.
No, it's, it's zoned industrial, so there's no provision for any non-conforming, because it's not a condition of use.
Lots outstanding, so. That's in the long term for a rezoning, and that would be the question as you take a look at long term, the potential either reuse or other type of use long term, is that's a city decision that you may want to wrestle with looking ahead into the future as to, do you really want that to continue to be a man, an industrial site type usage in the downtown, or do you want to rezonate to something else?
Okay. Tom, anything else, Sean?
No, I just don't, I don't.
Okay. I don't have anything except wish everyone a happy holidays and happy new year. We'll see you guys all in January, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second by Rick Styler.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Okay, we're out of here. Thank you, everyone.